Linwood Town Hall Meeting. Give yourselves a hand, please. From what I understand, this has been the first meeting in quite some time. So this evening, we are going to gather, connect, and share quality information with one another. The topic of discussion is the state of the village. Who am I? My name is Kiss Allen Glover, and I am a myriad of things. I run a podcast called Step Up to Leadership. I work with a myriad of young individuals in and throughout the country on leadership abilities at an early age. Who else am I? I'm a father of a set of 23-year-old twins, and I don't want to block anyone there. Both in grad school, I am extremely proud of that. The other thing, they're both my size. Cha-ching. As I mentioned earlier, I'm a motivational speaker to the teens in and throughout the country. I visit colleges in and throughout the state of Illinois, the state of Kentucky, just talking with young teens around professional development. I'm a professional development curator. I come out to companies in and throughout the country and develop that. I'm a licensed reverend. Yes, I can marry you. So keep that in mind. Y'all were supposed to laugh. I'm a radio personality. I have an alter ego. His name is Darnell Davis, and he talked with a lift. You have probably heard him in and throughout the city. I'm a former corporate sales trainer for AT&amp;T, Verizon, and WW Granger. I also serve as Freddie the Falcon. In my current role as Director of Enrollment Management at Harry S. Truman College, I am also the mascot for the college. Finally, I'm the head women's basketball coach at Truman College. So as you can see, I'm an engaged individual. And so tonight, it's really about you taking in this information. We're going to ask a few things of you. There's a board over here. As we go through these presentations and you gather this information, you're going to be going, right? You're going to have questions and concerns. As I mentioned, this is the first of its kind in quite some time I've heard. And so the little sticky notes that are held right here, you're going to be able to fill that out quietly, walk up to the board, and put it on there. The other disclosure that I want to give is for right now, I'm going to make sure I go on mute. I'm going to turn this thing all the way down. And so for about the next hour and a half, if you can, silence your phones. If you can, turn them off, turn them off, because this is going to be some powerful, powerful information. The state of the, the state of the village, all your elected officials and department heads will provide quality updates for you this evening. And so when it gets to that component where you are really concerned, park and recreation, finance, right? That's where you may have an opportunity to write down those questions. Now let's meet our trustees and committee assignment members. First up is Mr. Randall K. Blakely, Economic Development and Community Affairs. Y'all can give him a hand. Second, we have Mr. David Lilly, Public Works Planning and Zoning. That's my man right there. Relanda Clark, Ortness and Resolution Planning. You said go forward. Planning and zoning, health and wellness, which is a very important component right now. Ms. Relanda Clark, please. Cheryl Dunlop, Park and Recreations. How you doing? Kirk D. Marshall, Public Safety. That's my frat brother, y'all. That's my frat brother. Ms. Cynthia Eves, Finance. When we look at department heads, we have Police Department Chief Daniel Dempsey. Assistant Chief Robin Brody. Fire Department Chief Kenyon Newton. Public Works Superintendent Raymond Campbell. Finance, the Finance Director is Ms. Kimberly Sweaterick. I've been practicing that with all, all morning. You can't hear me?
No, I can't hear you. I just didn't see, I can't put the names of the faces because, you know, they're going in. You know, and uh...
Okay. So with that said, they're also going to come up and present one by one, right? And then they'll reintroduce themselves. So I own that, okay? I'm sorry. Going forward, whoever name I announce, just stand up and kind of stand out and curtsy. Finance, Finance Director, Ms. Kimberly Sweaterick. Village Engineer, Mr. Dave Schilling. Robinson Engineer David Schilling. Village Clerk and Village Collector, this is an important one, Karen Wingfield-Bond. And my new favorite Administrator, Executive Administrator, Ms. Natalie Oliver. And last but definitely not least, the Mayor of the Village of Linwood, the first woman elected as Mayor of Linwood, Ms. Jada D. Curry. So I thought about a few things as I worked to prepare for this opportunity. I had an opportunity to jump on the phone with the mayor, and there were some words that really stuck. And so I created this Wordle, because I do work in the college. And, and these were some of the words that really stood out to me. Quality, trust, supportive, informative. One was around courageous conversations, really being able to do that. Transparency, connected, economic development. Trust was a word that continued to surface. So as we go through this evening, guys, I want you to really be mindful and be engaged, right? This is the shift. You're coming out of an interesting time. There's new leadership in place. And so we are all charged with really engaging and being a part of the growth, right? We don't, we don't have to stand back on the sideline anymore not knowing. They are here. This is open dialogue. We'll have some Q and A at the end. And so just be mindful, these are some of the words that were really on our heart that she wanted to talk about, and I thought that this was a really transparent opportunity. Okay? All right, real quick. And this is going to be relevant to what we're doing. I need to get under there. There's a box under there. If you can slide it to me. Okay, thank you. I need three volunteers to come up, please. Eddie Jones, come up here. I need two other volunteers. Don't I can volunteer you, or you can just come up here? Okay, come on, come on frat. I'm not going to put you in no compromising situation, okay? I want you all to stand right here and make me a little circle, okay? Make me a small circle right here, real tight. We all good? Now, from a priority standpoint, I need you to think about as a community, some of the things that we have to do every day to make sure that our community stays intact, right? And as an audience, just yell some of it out. Things that you do every day, like pick up paper that in my neighborhood, you know, things like that, right? So just begin to pass that around in a circle. And just think about priorities, things that you have to do every day. Just go, keep going. Yeah, because everybody talking, y'all making too much noise. Y'all got to be quiet. There you go. Now, these are, these are curveballs. Keep going, keep going. Go the other way with this, with this one. Go the other way. Those are curveballs, things that happen every day, you didn't have no idea they was going to happen. Okay, keep going, faster, faster. Now, these are distractions, stuff that happened, go the other way. Hurry up, don't drop nothing. Keep going, don't stop. Okay, keep, okay, stop, okay, stop. All right, y'all get him a hand. Okay, real quick, it was silly, but how did that look? Chaotic, confusing, right? We talked about three categories. We talked about priorities, distractions, and curveballs, right? And when they had the priorities, they were fine, right? And when you think about it as a village, when you just dealing with the work you got to do every day, you fine, you getting it done, you going home, you sitting on your deck, and you, you sitting on your deck. But then you get the distractions, things that you couldn't necessarily, I'm sorry, the curveballs, things you couldn't necessarily anticipate, but it's part of what you do every day. Does that make sense? But then the distractions, maybe a little bit too much on FaceTime, social media. Mama called, she needs you to come into the city to take her to get her medicine because the van didn't come on time. And I want you to think about that from a village aspect and from a leadership aspect. For as much as your priorities are important, there are other things that are being juggled, even in your own household as the leaders of your household. It is important that we understand priorities need to be short and sweet. Things that we can get to, get done, smart goals, we're out of there. As these individuals talk and report out of their departments, remember, every, they're working for the entire community. So just be mindful of that. And that's a pretty good icebreaker with your kids. I'm telling you, they'd be like, that's what you go through all day, mommy? Now let me ask you this. Out of all three of those categories, which one do you think, just as individuals, that we spend the most time in the day doing? Putting out fires. Putting out fires, distractions. So just be mindful of that when you think about priorities, right? And how we schedule our time and so forth and so on. All right, I'm going to get out of here. But here's what I'll tell you. We're going to start this, make sure your cell phones are on mute. Remember, if you have questions, walk right up to that board, put those questions on the board. We are gathering, connecting, and engaging. This is an important meeting. It's the first of its kind in quite some time. Let's not waste any more time. All of our elected officials and department heads will provide an update, up to three to five minutes each. As I mentioned, please record your calls, and for any information, you have the information there, as well as follow the village on Facebook. First up, we have Ms. Joyce Hurley, Buildings Department.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? Good evening, everybody. How y'all doing? Can you hear me back there? You sure you, so how y'all doing? Y'all doing all right? All right, thank you so much. All right, um, where we, where the village was when we arrived, I know I started on the day of May 17. And the first order of business for us was to begin to figure out how to integrate or create an integration into, to the current status of the system. That was a challenge since we were not familiar and there was really no exchange of power. There was no training available to process and issue these permits. We found that a lot of our permits were being issued but not put into the system, which obviously was an opportunity for us to not get that revenue. Our re-inspections were not consistent. We were not using an as-is affidavit, which is a form that we use when someone is selling or buying something as an as-is property. There were no viable checks and balances for these inspections for all three components, which is commercial, residential, or whether you are a tenant, and sales. And then our permits for our new single-family homes, those three builders that are in the community, within the community, we had quite a few of those homes that were, permits were issued, but they were not in the system. So again, that was revenue we could not account for. And where we are, or where we are now, we have successfully self-trained onto the MSI system. I'm sure there's more that we're going to learn about it, but right now, we pretty much feel like we have it on lock. We've created a different rotation for those permits, which is seven days. Summertime may take a little bit longer because everybody's doing a project in the summertime. But when we create this rotation of seven days, we can then do our pre-inspections effectively, and then we have an efficiency with regard to contractor registration, making sure that all the contractors that do all the work in your homes are registered with the village. Between the months of May 17th to October 27th, when I ran the last report, we had done 475 permits at $173,415. Our inspections for our home sales and tenant turnover has continued. We recreated and issued an as-is affidavit. And what that does, the as-is affidavit, so if you sell a home as-is, when the buyer gets the home, he also gets the responsibility for the repairs that do not allow them to pass that inspection. And within, within that as-is affidavit, it gives them 90 days upon closing to make those repairs. And again, that just keeps the efficiency of the home, it keeps the value of the neighborhood, and it keeps the responsibility of homeownership. Does that make sense? Thank you. The contractor registration is strongly encouraged. We also have an inspector that does due diligence to make sure that our contractors are registered. And in that light, I would like to introduce Wave to the People Field. This is Philip Smith. He is our village inspector. And so it is his job to just enforce the ordinances that are already in creation. The majority of our new single-family homes are now submitted and in the system and being paid for. We've also had to recreate some of those formats and had to have some of our builders resubmit that information. Where the village is going, we want to be continuous with our permit process. We want to make sure that as you submit your permits, when we ask for pertinent information, say for example, you are getting a roof job done, you know, re-roof, and you tell us that the job for the re-roof is $10,000. We're just going to ask for a copy of that estimate that comes from your contractor just to verify the cost of the labor and the materials, because that's how your permit is based on for price, right? So we want to make sure that everything is consistent. When it becomes difficult, when you say something is $1,000, a re-roof is never $1,000, even if you do it yourself. So we just want to be consistent and have our records be consistent. So if you were to sell your home 10 years from now, people know the last time you had a re-roof done and who did that process. We also continue our pre-inspections, our final inspections. We hope to create an electronic trail for these inspections, because right now, every inspection is a piece of paper. And so during the summer, where we had a quite a bit, I mean, obviously, real estate is moving, moving, so a lot of homes, a lot of tenant turnover, and all of those require inspections. That's a lot of paper. And so when we have to go back and do a re-inspection, it's still a process to keep up with the paper trail on that. And we want to get ahead of the summer season for construction and permitting. Things to remember, your permits, they last for six months, so you can plan your projects accordingly. So if you know that you're going to get a fence in June, you can get your permit in April or May. It would not be advised that you get a permit June 1st for a June 10th job, because once the summer comes, everybody is requesting a permit, and we want to do the pre-inspections. Why? Because we want to make sure that we're within the ordinances. We also want to make sure that what you're creating or doing is safe for you and safe for the contractor. All contractors must be registered with the village to perform the work. Make sure to display your permit in the window or on the door when that work is being done. That way, as inspectors are rolling through the neighborhood, they already have the information that they need. They don't have to stop, they don't have to bother anybody, they don't have to ask any questions. Compliance inspections are needed for all home sales and/or tenant changes. If you're selling a home as-is, and make sure you acquire an as-is affidavit, it must be submitted and upon closing, send it back to the village, and you can send that to me. And lastly, if you think your scope of work may need a permit, it probably does. So there's just about everything that you do within your home that needs, within, inside and outside, that needs a permit. And we want to encourage you, if you're calling the village and you're trying to get in touch with myself or trying to get in touch with Phil, remember, everybody's calling the village. So if you really need to reach me, you can email me at jhurley@thevillageoflinwood.net. And that is it for me. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Raymond Campbell, Superintendent of Public Works. I'm a resident of Linwood. Me and my family moved here in 1992. So we going on 20, on 30 years as of April of 2022. So I just want to let you know that I'm a resident. I love Linwood. I've seen it grow. I've seen it have its growing pains, and, and we're going to move forward. I'm going to use, take this opportunity to, to address some of the issues that we're having when we came into...
Give me your clipboard.
Into the office.
So you can read in our clipboard.
Okay. What we inherited. My first day on the job, I had OSHA knocking at my door. Occupational Safety and Health. The village had been cited, and they was in the process of assessing fines based on the number of violations that they found at the Public Works building for the guys. So also in that, in that process, it was equipment, because you have to be trained on equipment, items like tractor trucks for cleaning sores. You had bucket trucks for changing out, working on the streetlights, chainsaws, and other items of this nature. And PPE, there was no directive on, on the proper PPE, so guys were just kind of wearing whatever they felt like wearing. So we're going to move on to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. 2019 LMO 2 water report was due. It was two years overdue. Another state agency was, was about to find us for not doing our water report. This water report deals with the drinking water. And what it does is, it's a report that shows the total number of gallons used for the year by the village. It showed the guy, the number of gallons that was billed. It shows the number of gallons that were used, that was not billed, and if we had any loss of water usage, which was a good, a good mechanism to let us know if we had any major underground leaks in our system. So we, we was like two, two years behind, and we pulled together, myself and the office staff, we pulled together, gathered the data, because there was no data. They changed systems. They went from the old system to MSI, and it only went back so far. So it was a challenge just getting information in order to do the report. Now it became time to buy supplies, to, to make some repairs, public works repairs, where we had water main breaks during the winter, broken curbs and other items, and all of the accounts was delinquent. So with delinquent accounts, the vendors wasn't providing any materials. So we had to make arrangements with the vendors in order to give them some money so that we could, we could make some repairs. And equipment out of service, about 50% of the equipment was down at the time, which without the equipment, you can't really, you can't really do a good job if you don't have the right equipment, you know? Tools makes the, makes the individual. So if you don't have the right tools, you know, it kind of slows down the process of doing a good job. What has been accomplished in almost six months? All training has been completed. We jumped on board. I talked to the young lady from OSHA. She sent me a detail report of what was needed. We reached out to our vendors. We got training established, and, and we got everyone trained. Illinois Department of Natural Resources, the 2019 report, which encompassed from 2018 of October to 2019 of September. That's how the report runs. So this report is in for approval. There was one question asked, the question was, was answered, forwarded back to the department, and we just waiting on the final approval so we can start on 2019 and 20 report. With the vendors, we established payment plans in order to, to get some supplies to start making necessary repairs, because there was a lot of items that we inherited that needed to be done. From the winter months, we get items from salt trucks, running over curbs, maybe take down a few mailboxes, and things of that nature. I mean, it's, when it's snow out, our main objective is to get the roads clean so you can get out and go to work. That's, that's what our goal are. No, there's going to be some intangibles in there, but you know, the goal is to make sure that the resident have access to and from, from their property and, and to and from the expressway. Okay? Some small equipment has been replaced. We had some equipment that was un-reparable. It was so outdated that they, they, they didn't even make that model, you know, they have serial numbers, that model wasn't even made anymore. So we, we replaced it. I mean, why try to repair something that's 15, 20 years old? So we went in, in the process, we replaced the equipment so that the guys had something to work with. Speed bump installation at intersection of Lake Park Drive and 198 Street, Lake Linwood Drive and 198 Street. We had so many complaints from the residents about speeders. This is, this is on the north end of Lakeview Park, of speeders just, just doing donuts, I mean, revving up their engines. So the idea was, if we put down the speed bumps, this could possibly help slow them down, right? So when they get to the stop sign, they'll have time to speed up again. So it's just something that we, that we're, we're doing, we're experimenting, experimenting with. Probably the middle of December, we're going to take the speed bumps up so that when the snow season come, they'll be able to, the snowplows be able to run accurately without damaging their vehicles, their plows, or, or affecting the, the residents. Okay, looking for funding, we're looking for funding to maintain equipment and vehicles. Like I say, probably our equipment, we're probably about 80% of our equipment is, is 15 to 20 years old. So you know, with that kind of equipment, you spend a lot of money on repairs. So our goal is to look for a funding, funding so we can, can update our equipment so that we can, we can be more productive in our, in our work. We're also working on a schedule for maintaining the beautification of the community, parks, playgrounds, mowing, vacant lots, and stormwater drainage. So what we want to do, we want to, we want to be proactive instead of reactive. Mostly this year, we've been reactive, putting out fires and things of that nature. So, so we're looking to have a plan going into the spring for the parks, playgrounds, mowing vacant lots, and stormwater drainage. Stormwater drainage, if some of you, you all aren't aware, that $2 for Lincoln-Lansing Drainage, it's, it's for, it's for our benefit. That drainage ditch that runs parallel with Torrance Avenue, what it does, it picks up all of the water off the street. We get those, we just had a rain event maybe a couple of weeks back, and that ditch was full. So we prefer the water be in the ditch when the ditch has a clear waterway. When I mean by clear waterway, we, probably about two months ago, we went through with Lincoln-Lansing Drainage, MWRD, IDOT, removed a lot of trees, removed a lot of debris and stuff. We found TVs, mattresses, everything in the, in the ditch. So, so the job through Lincoln-Lansing Drainage was, we got all this debris out, got it cleaned up, removed some of the trees so that we had a clear waterway so that when we have a heavy rain, this water can, can move down the system and doesn't sit in front of our homes in the, in the drains. And let's conclude my report.
Can you click for me?
You want me to click for you?
Yes, please. Good evening, everyone. My name is Susan Stacy, and I am the Administrative Assistant for the second favorite department in the village, the Water Department. Probably one of the most complained about villages since, or I'm sorry, departments since the transition. What I'd like to do is I'd like to explain some of the issues that we've dealt with in the Water Department before, or after the transition from the mayor. I myself worked in the Police Department, in the Records Department. When the mayor transitioned, everybody in the Water Department left. She had absolutely no help in one of the most important departments in the village. The water is your revenue. So when I came over, I had absolutely no training on the Water Department and only knew everything about the ordinances in the village. So there were, with that no-transition team, we had very little training on the water system, the billing system, and the different levels that we dealt with in the monthly billing of the water. When the water system, when the billing goes out, the first thing that they do is they read the meters. With that, we had no idea what we were doing with the meter reading. Once the, we got down the meter... Once the, we got down the meter reading, it goes into the billing software. We had no idea what we were doing with the billing software. We had very little information on it. We were basically self-teaching ourselves. After the bills are created, it goes out to an outsourced to print the bills. This is where we had the problem in July. Some of the problems that we encountered were the meter reading. We had a problem with people getting extremely high estimates. We had problems with people getting no readings. We had problems with the dates on the readings being wrong. We worked with the Census Meter Reading Company. We had the meter reader refurbished. We got some training on how to do correct estimates on these non-metered accounts and we think we've got that taken care of. We had issues with the, in July, with the billing company that doubled the fees. I heard from a lot of residents about that issue. Even though the bills were correct in our system, the billing software had doubled the strain, the drain fee and the sewer fees. So we got that taken care of. Then we had an issue with the bills being delayed. When we started this process, we did not know how long it took to get those bills out to the residents. So between Crystal and I, I think we've got it down pretty good. When people complain about the delay in the water bill, there's only so much we can do. Everybody knows about the problem that the post office is having. So our bills have been going out in a timely manner, just can't handle what the post office is doing. When we took over, because we've had a couple bumps in the billing, the moratorium on the shut offs was lifted by the state in March of 2021. Because we were having the trainings and the problems and the issues and the trying to get the billing software correct, the mayor did not process any shut offs or apply any penalties to the accounts. We finally got into the, we've finally gotten to the position where we are able to assess penalties, which I'm sure some of you have seen on your last bills, and we did start this first round of shut offs. We had a couple hiccups with the shut offs, but this month, we're still going to proceed with the, under the ordinance, how the shut offs are to be done. With that being said, if you notice on your bills, on the backside of the bills, for years, it has said the procedure for the shut offs. If you have any problems and need to make payment arrangements, please reach out to us because it's easier to make a payment arrangement prior to the shut off. We're willing to work with anybody, you know, we're willing to do anything for you. We don't want to come and shut your water off because we understand that in these times, it's hard, you know? So when we got into this billing software, we discovered that there were thousands of dollars, over $173,000 in uncollected water funds. And that's even prior to the COVID. We had a backlog, many accounts that were on payment plans that were delinquent and uncollected. So what we've accomplished in almost six months, we purchased and installed a second register at the front counter to alleviate some of the long waits on those, those billing dates, the due dates. We did hire another part-time administrative assistant, Crystal Johnson-Standa Hop. And I'm sure many of you have talked to Crystal. We reinstated this recycling program. You will see on this bill going forward, the recycling program, the fee for that program. If you have not received a recycling tote, please reach out to me. I'll make sure that you get one. We do have a schedule of the recycling. Apparently, some people didn't realize that the recycling was done every other Thursday. So we do have the recycling schedule up here for you. Anybody who receives garbage service from the village will get one of those recycling totes. We did have some training, like I said, on the meter reading and the water billing software. This helped us to avoid any problems that we initially encountered. Our meter reader, again, has been updated and modified so that we can avoid these. We cleared up the excessive backlog on a lot of the delinquent water accounts and payment plans account. And again, I'm extending the opportunity, Crystal and I will work with you. If you're having a problem, just contact us, we'll get you on a payment plan so that you're not shut off. We are continuing to work on all these. We are looking to improve the water billing software. The software that we have right now could be better. We've had it for a while, but we're looking to improve on that so that we can replace it with more error less, error less billing and a more user-friendly updated system. We did send letters to people with high reads. I know several people reached out to Crystal and myself last month. They were concerned about the high water reads. We reached out to people who have had consistently high water reads. We had the Water Department come out and take a look to check for leaks. You know, they have a system of checking the toilets, any sprinkler systems, anything like that. If you believe that you have a problem at the house or if you get another high read, reach out to us, we'll have somebody come out. There is no charge for that appointment. So if you are concerned about the water usage and the consumption at your house, reach out to Crystal or myself and we can send somebody out there. And that is about it for the Water Department. Again, if you have any questions or any problems, can reach out to myself or Crystal.
My name is Kenny Newton. I'm the Fire Chief for the Village of Linwood. I've been on the Fire Department for about 12, 18 years. So I've, I actually first moved here to Linwood back in 1995. So I've been around, I've seen the ups and downs with this village and I've grown with this village by providing, as I was providing the fire services. So I'm going to talk about three key things. Basically, the challenges that the department has started with when I started as chief back in May. The department's about six months later where we are and where we're going to be going on going forward. So the key, one of the key challenges that we started with the department is low manpower. Right now, we're 11 members strong, which is actually a lot lower than we actually want to be. We have to provide 24 by seven services to the village and it's very difficult to do with 11 members. Right now, there's a national shortage of firefighters and so one of the key things that we're doing is that we're actively constantly recruiting. If you pass by the fire station, you'll see the sign by the fire station in the park there that says we're actively recruiting. If you look on our Facebook page, you'll see Facebook posts. So we're really trying to reach out, we're trying to reach out to the local community colleges, to the local high schools, try to draw up interest in the fire service and help people that want to make the fire service a career, help them get trained and go ahead and do that. The other issue that we had with the department is that we didn't really have much of a direction. We were kind of, for lack of words, we were stagnant. We weren't growing with the village. The village has been growing, there's been more people moving into the village, especially now with this administration. We have new commercial opportunities that are starting to pop up around the village and the Fire Department needed to grow with it. The Fire Department, basically, for when I joined in 1995, has been ran the exact same way to what it is today. So there has been, really not been a lot of change. And that's one of the key things that during my tenure as Fire Chief, is I want to change to make sure that we have a fire service that better meets the community needs. So one of those key things also is about aging equipment in the station. Our station is very old. It used to be a mechanic shop. It's been the same station for well over 40, 50 years and it was a mechanic shop before then. This building is kind of crumbling. It's, we have cracks in the mortar and it's one of those things that we need to address, whether we make repairs to the existing station or we consider building a new public safety center down the road. So let's talk about where we are today. So we've started a huge recruitment drive and we've already hired one additional person. We're in the process of hiring four more people for the Fire Department. We're mid-interviewing and processing right now and we're going to continue this recruitment process ongoing. We're not going to recruit three, four people on, wait six months and then start another recruitment drive. Recruitment is going to be an ongoing basis until we get our numbers back to where they need to be. We need to replace expired structural firefighting gear. This is the gear that we wear when we go into a structure fire. Per NFPA standards, our gear has currently expired by about a year and a half and one of the key goals is making sure the safety of the men and women on the Linwood Fire Department. So we want to make sure that they have the proper structural gear and I'm looking at various funding sources such as grants, the village and any other areas that we can actually gain money from. And also servicing the fire apparatus and equipment. Your ISO ratings, which define basically how insurance actually, insurance companies define your, your payments for your, like your, your properties or where you live, is defined, one of the key inputs is the ISO rating. We want to improve that. Right now, we're in ISO rating of four. We want to improve that to something to a three or two. In order to do that, we need to make sure that our equipment is serviced because that's one of the key things that to look at. So every year, our fire engines, our fire trucks need to get reevaluated, make sure that they are serviceable. So where we're going, so let's start with the short term. Short term is I want to develop a 24 by seven staffing model. Our department right now is a paid on call department, which is a lot of people would consider like volunteer, but effectively that you get paid for every call that you actually make. We want to actually make this so it's a 24 by seven staff department where we have people that are available within seconds notice to respond. Now, we use auto aid agreements with our neighboring towns to help alleviate that so we still do have a pretty good response time, but we want to be good stewards to our neighbors and be able to provide that type of elite service ourselves as well. We plan to do this in three phases. We're planning, we're implementing phase one, starting January 1st of this year, where we're going to be moving from a 1099 pay model to a W2 model. So the, all the firemen will actually be true employees of the village. And we're going to do this in further phases as the resources allow. For the long-term strategy, we're developing a five-year strategic plan. Where's the department going? How is it going to meet the needs of the village and how is it going to adapt along with the village and make sure that's efficient and effective? So one thing we want to do is we want to start budgeting, our budgeting for our aging fleet. We have equipment that's over 25 years of age. The NFPA standards, National Fire Protection Association, says that we should be replacing our engines within 25 years because they get old, they wear down, they start to break down, they start to become costly to fix. So we can't keep, keep this apparatus around that we, some of the apparatus we have around forever. So we want to improve on that and we want to be able to make sure that we're getting the most value out of our apparatus. So that way, we're not paying a lot in maintenance costs, but we're also making sure that we're good stewards with our resources. We're evaluating our fire and EMS services to meet village and growing needs. So we want to take a look at how we provide EMS services. Right now, we're partnered with a third-party ambulance company and we're just evaluating everything, making sure that it's going to meet the village needs going forward. We want to better work with police and public works than we have in the past. We want to find out where there's areas of synergy where we can work together so that we can provide a better, a better service to the residents. One of the key things is I'm looking to upgrade the department to non-transport ALS services and what that basically means is to have paramedics on staff that can support our, our third-party EMS provider. Right now, we're a BLS department, which means we can do basic life support. So advanced life support would be something where we could assist with giving IVs, setting apart monitors for residents. Again, it's, it's all about providing a better service for our community. So in summary, the key things that I want you to take home is that we are looking to find a scalable, efficient, effective and modern fire and EMS service for the Village of Linwood. We want to better support our community and our neighbors, both with the residents and with the fire service. And we are pushing to recruit and develop and retain talent within our department. With that, up there is my contact information. You can reach me at knewton@villageoflinwood.net. You can also find it on the fire@villageoflinwood.net that comes to us. Or if you have any fire prevention or fire education, safety questions, you can go to fireprevention@villageoflinwood.net. With that, I'd like to thank everybody for their time and I believe I'm handing it over to the Police Chief.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Dempsey. I am the Chief of Police. Thank you all for coming. On May 25th, 2021, myself and Assistant Chief Robin Bowley were sworn in as the Chief of Police and Assistant Chief. We came in with a 90-day plan and goals, which we have reached each one of these. We held a department meeting in order to explain our leadership values, goals and expectations. We met one-on-one with all the supervisors, police officers and police personnel to get a better understanding of their needs and goals. We met with the elected officials to open lines of communication and transparency. We want to make sure everything that happens at the Police Department, all the elected officials are aware of. We met with the representatives from all the outside agencies, State Police, Major Crime Task Force, State's Attorney's Office, Bud's Dispatch and Chiefs of Police from all surrounding communities. When we came in, we threw out the old policy book and decided to rewrite it, update the entire policy manual. And the reason we did that, because Linwood was not compliant with any state or federal mandates for our policies. So all the new ones are up to date, we're, we're almost up to date on them, but they had none that were, that were in compliance, so we needed to change that. And the reason we did that is because anytime a police officer does anything that is questioned, the first thing they look at is the policy book. They want to see what our policies are. So that is there, when it's, when the mandates are there, that is there to protect the officer, the village, the Police Department and the public. We examine our patrol assignments and schedule to determine what works best for Linwood. As of January 1st, we are going to have a new schedule in place. Examine officers' training records to determine if additional training is needed. Right now, all of our officers are up to date with the state mandated training, which is good. Formalize our department's vision, values, valued behaviors, strategies and goals. Understand the structure of the department, determine if changes are needed to be made to allow the department run more efficiently and address any issues that business owners may have and how we can help. And we put all those expectations in place. Our leadership, I believe we are brought in here for our leadership skills, our community policing skills and our communication skills with the public. We've increased the number of police officers working on the streets. We created a community policing program that builds relationships with residents, seniors, children, business owners and hold relationship building events such as luncheons, fishing, bowling and movie night. And you will see some of that in some later slides. And build working relationships with surrounding municipalities and improve on communication. Our leadership goals, to build trust through personal integrity, prioritize, not how hard you work, but how smart you work. Creating a positive change, developing people, making better police officers. Everybody can get better every day. We have great police officers, but everybody can always improve. Identifying and solving problems to prevent their recurrence and defining and articulating a vision. We have put in place 95 of, out of our 160 new policies. Officers are notified of the policies each week and once the policies are acknowledged and they are all in place, they will do training bulletins, which are mandatory. So every morning, when officers come to roll call, they will have to do training bulletins on the computer that keep them familiar with the policies so they can never say, oh, I didn't read that or I never saw that. So they're always up to date with the policies. Some of our officer training, on the left here are state mandated training, which everyone is in compliance with, civil rights, constitutional, use of law enforcement authority, cultural competency, human rights, legal updates, mental health awareness, procedural justice, sexual assault trauma, informed response and use of force. On the right here is additional training that we allow officers to go to or anybody that's interested in them. Extra use of force, firearms training, police photography, juvenile specialist, officer, breath alcohol training and evidence technicians. And the bottom three juvenile In the bottom three, juvenile officer breath and basic evidence, we try to have every officer on the department trained and knows, so there's always somebody on duty. Manpower, since we've started here on May, we've hired five new officers, so we previously had 17. We are now up to 22 officers on the street. Part of our change in the department, we decided to create the position of Patrol Commander, and we have made our first Patrol Commander, which is Commander Jesse Hernandez of the Linwood Police Department. And now, I will turn it over to our Director of Community Policing, Sergeant Weinberg.
Thank you, Chief. Again, my name is Larry Weinberg. I'm a sergeant here with the Linwood Police Department. I've been appointed Director of Community Policing. So, what is community policing? It's about building relationships with the community, finding more effective ways to solve ongoing problems by meeting with the residents, having a renewed emphasis on crime prevention, creating internal change on the way we police the community, and building for the future by making community police efforts a regular part of the police department and daily interactions with the public. Community policing provides decentralized and personalized police service to the community. It recognizes the police cannot impose order on the community from outside, and the people must be encouraged to think of the police as a resource that they can use to help solving the community concerns. It applies a new philosophy and organizational strategy that provides the flexibility to meet local needs and priorities as they change over time. What are our long-term goals within the community? We want to demand continuous contact with the community. We want to stress exploring new ways to protect and enhance the lives of those who are the most vulnerable, being the juveniles, elderly, minorities, disabled, and the poor. And we want to understand and broaden the scope of previous outreach efforts such as crime prevention and police-community relations. The village is zoned off into two sections. This is primarily for two reasons. It's to increase police presence and decrease the response time to calls for service. We began holding neighborhood block meetings. Many of you I know in here I've already met with on these neighborhood block meetings, it's been a really positive thing, got a really good response. This helps with identifying policing and public safety needs in our community relative to your specific area. We have, we share tips on regarding keeping you and your property safe against current crime trends, and we would like to host these meetings multiple times throughout the year. We've had coffee with a cop. We're going to be continually instituting this, and what better way to get to know your officers than coffee and donuts? You knew, you knew we were going to say that once at least, right? We've obviously had the Law Enforcement Torch Run this past year, is the most we ever raised. Raised over $1,500 from the Special Olympics. And the reason that we did so well on it, I believe, is that it was a whole village-wide effort. Everybody jumped in, when before it was, it was just kind of a few of us trying to chip in here and there, but everybody jumped in on it, and it was a really great thing. We had our honoring, our Veterans Day luncheon. Forty-five veterans attended, fall and comrade table honoring the 13 fallen soldiers in Afghanistan. The American flag was presented to the Mayor J.D. Curry. Luncheon dessert were provided, and we had raffles and giveaways as well. This, this whole idea came about from just the walk and talk, the infamous walk and talks that the mayor instituted, and just by a brief conversation during a walk and talk, this came out with Mr. Trustee Marshall and obviously our Assistant Chief Robin Boldy. So, it was just one little thing that came out and sprouted, and ended up being such a great thing, and our veterans really appreciated it. And we really appreciate them. We had our senior luncheon, which I feel was just a great time, a great meet and greet, and we got to address specific, you know, needs for a certain demographic for our community. We had 80 seniors in attendance. We had a question-and-answer session. We shared safety tips, and again, we provided food and dessert. We had the cops and bobbers event. Twenty children participated. We had prizes and raffles, food, drinks, and T-shirts provided. All participants were able to keep the new fishing poles and tackle accessories provided. That again was our chief's, that was our chief's baby. He did a lot of good work on that. And again, the whole village, you know, the trustees, everybody jumped out and helped out. Even the village clerk was, you know, worming hooks for our kids, which there was a few people that didn't want to do that, but she stepped up and did it. Definitely not me. We had a bike raffle Linwood Fest. Police officers donated money to purchase bikes for the raffle. We also have our official village ornament coming soon. The 2021 Holiday Ornament is on pre-sale at the Village Hall for $15, and the proceeds will benefit the Police and Fire Holiday Food and Toy Drive. We're hosting a food and toy drive to help, you know, some families in need in our village. And again, it's just, it's another great thing that our entire village is participating in, and everybody's throwing a helping hand, and I couldn't be prouder to be a part of Obviously, we, this past couple weeks ago, we had Oktoberfest, the trunk-or-treat, just a great turnout. A lot of people came out and had everything help out, so it was really good. We had Linvenia, such a popular thing that they did it twice. The one thing that we've been doing lately is we had a traffic safety program for new drivers, introduced professionalism during a traffic stop, strengthening the citizen and police relationship, and the program is currently being taught in TF South. I was just there a couple weeks ago, and I will be going to Bloom Township, driver's education courses as well. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Assistant Chief Robin Boldy.
Thank you, Sarge. Good evening, everyone. My name is Robin Boldy. I'm the Assistant Chief of Police here in Linwood. Just kind of piggybacking off of Sergeant Weinberg, this is another community event that Chief and I attended. We donated blood at the Ho-Chunk a few weeks ago. Three years ago in 2018, we lost a police officer to cancer. His name was Daniel Kirby, and we recently held a memorial at our police station for Officer Kirby. Several attended, both public and police officers from all over. We retired his badge, which was 102, and his wife was, we presented a couple items to his wife, and our training facility was renamed the Daniel G. Kirby Training Facility. So, we held that event in his memory. When we first got here, we only had one Police and Fire Commissioner. Now, we have three, and I would ask them to stand up. We have Ms. Marilyn Mason, Chandra Perry, and Mr. Charles Johnson. Thank you. They were recently sworn in also. The Linwood Police Department has never had a police chaplain, well, we do now, and that's going to be Pastor Philip France. He was recently sworn in in September, and he's the first police chaplain of the Linwood Police Department. Police social media. Our Facebook page is back up and running. It's the Village of Linwood Police Department. It's updated daily. We also have our Neighbor's Ring Public Safety App that's up and running, so we can communicate with the residents through your Ring cameras. And the Neighbor's App is actually a meeting place for community members and the police department to work together in keeping our neighborhoods safe. Flock cameras, these are licensed play readers that assist in law enforcement investigations. They allow the police to see every vehicle that enters the village and exits the village. We have six cameras. Three have been installed, and the other three will be installed in the next couple weeks, so we're pretty excited about that. We have a newly developed tactical unit that consists of four officers. Their main goal is drug enforcement and the removal of guns off the street. We also have our K-9 unit back up and running. This is our K-9 Luna. Officer Wayne Lindley is our handler for Luna. Luna's a Czech Shepherd from North Carolina. She's three months, well, four months old now. Luna was actually donated to the village by Stacy Govea, who's the president of Protecting K-9 Heroes, so that donation saved us probably about $12,000. Also, we have several other businesses that made donations, Stony Tire, Lansing Auto, Holiday Boat Sales, Thornton Township, Luanne Hingley of Pennsylvania, and also Pet Supplies Plus and Hometown, who is donating Luna's food for the rest of her life. So, that's, that's pretty big. We as the police department, the relationships with other municipalities was not there, so Chief and I have made a, we have really made a point to try to build our relationships and repair the relationships with the other municipalities. So, these are just a few that we've been working with on a regular basis. Upcoming events, Child and Safety Seat Installation Day. Sergeant Weinberg will be spearheading that. We're going to have a chili cook-off, School Career Days, Thanksgiving Food Drive, and a Holiday Toy Drive. Our future goals as a police department, we want to deploy law enforcement resources in the most efficient and effective manner. We want to increase crime prevention measures, possibly get some more cameras, focus on deterrence, the tactical unit, that's to start with that. We want to increase police officer training, and we want to strengthen our community relationships. These are our contacts here. If you need to contact any of us, you can email us, which is probably the better way, but you can also contact us here at the police department, and also if you're, if you're near and you need to talk, usually someone's here on station, well, someone's on station to speak to you personally. So, with that being said, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, I'm Kimberly Swiderek, and I'm the Finance Director for the Village of Linwood. Hi, Joyce. Next slide, please. What we inherited, on May 11th, 2021, we inherited a general fund that had, that has a deficit of $5.4 million. The last time the general fund had a surplus was in 1997, 24 years ago. We have 24, $25 million in pension debt. $21 million of that alone is just in the police pension. The fiscal year 2022 budget was not completed and passed by its due date of April 30th, 2021. General Fund Bank Recs was not reconciled in over a year. We have $3.4 million in accounts payable debt. Some of our key vendor invoices were a year and a half behind, such as ComEd, Nycor, and our water vendors. One of our vendors, Lincoln Lansing Drainage District, who we have multiple accounts with, some of the accounts haven't been paid in 17 years, and some of them haven't been paid in 47 years. Because of our lengthy delinquency, we owed them a prior balance of $2,250, interest expense of $2,100, but our annual current balance was just $106. We inherited a payment plan with Homewood Disposal. We were $647,000 behind with them. Payment plan with Illinois Municipal League, I.A. Mail, we owed them $160,000. $860,000, I'm sorry. We have two tax anticipation warrants, TALS, which are loans, that have been renewed every year for over 10 years, and the balance for those two TALS was $320,000. So, every year, the village would, when they renew, they would pay a little bit of the principal balance and some interest. Next slide, please. What has been accomplished in almost six months? Well, the fiscal year 2022 budget was completed and passed. We are now current with some of our key vendors such as ComEd, Nycor, Lincoln Lansing Drainage District, and the city of Hammond, as well as some of our smaller vendors. We have established a payment plan with the Village of Lansing of Water, because we owe them $599,000. We are maintaining our payment plans with Homewood Disposal and Illinois Municipal League. We have switched to a better healthcare provider with a lower cost, and we have paid off one of our TALS. What am I currently working on? I'm reconciling the general fund bank recs for fiscal year 2021. Audit work papers for the upcoming fiscal year 2021 audit. I would like to pay off the final TAL by March of April of 2022. We are working with Enterprise to lease our fleet of vehicles to save on cost, and implementing policies and procedures for accounts payable, accounts receivable, and payroll. And that's it in my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, guys. We're going to move pretty fast at this point as we go through the rest of the presentations. All this transparency feels really good. Everyone will stick around afterwards, so that if you have any questions, you're more than welcome to stick around, but we want to, it's literally a band going to start playing in a minute. And so, what we're going to do here is move along in the program. We have some Q&amp;A over here. We want to get through this entire process. So, if you all could, take yourselves about two, three minutes, explain the concept, and then make sure that just once we're done, you're available for any questions.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Wingfield-Bonn, and I proudly serve as your village clerk. I've been here since 1997. I raised my daughter here, and I love my village. My responsibilities as village clerk, one is keeper of the records. What that means is I'm responsible for all the board meeting minutes, any board agendas, any ordinances and resolutions that the board signs, any committee meeting minutes, any contracts that the board enters into, and other miscellaneous documents. Additional duties, I'm also the administrative FOIA officer. FOIA stands for Freedom of Information Act. And what that means is you have a right to know where your tax dollars go. You can get in contact with me if you have that, if you want information. You can contact us through our website, in person, fax, or email. I'm also responsible for ethics conformity. I have to ensure that compliance, compliance of all of our elected officials are adhered to and staff. That being said, they have to complete a statement of economic interest every year, have to go through OMA training, which is Open Meetings Act training, as well as FOIA training, which is Freedom of Information Act. Additional duties, I'm responsible for the electoral process. That means assisting with the elections in the area, registering voters, and coordinating with Cook County to ensure compliance with voting policies and procedures. And one of my other things I like doing is swearing in our newly elected officials, firefighters, police officers, and commissioners. Don't forget you guys. As a collector, my duties are to collect for the village. Collect for the village. I currently have various programs now. For instance, one of them is ProChamps. ProChamps mandates that all banks have to register their properties, their vacant properties with the village. They do this every six months, and the village collects fees for this. So far, for the year 2021, we've collected $75,000 in fees. I'm also seeking to implement additional programs as they become available. Future collective duties is to ensure that all businesses and residents are in compliance with village ordinances and resolutions. Our transition, May 2021, we had, hold back. You're going too fast. Oh, May 2021, we had major, major transition. Okay, I'm sorry. Major transition. It was called the Exodus, and just like the movie, it was insane. Insane. We had no one here that knew what they were doing. No one here knew what they were doing. We had to actually build it up from the ground up. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm told I'm had to wrap it up, but I just wanted to let everybody know that what we had to do for the village, we all pitched in, we made it happen. We had our hiccups, and our hiccups basically were challenging. I want to thank all of our residents, because they were patient with us. They knew good and well that we did not have the experience, we did not have the experience, and we basically needed your support, and a lot of our residents did that, so I just want to thank you. But they're making me leave. So, I wanted to end with my favorite quote, and my favorite quote is, "You'll be surprised what you can do when quitting is not an option." We couldn't quit. We could not quit. We had to, we had to help you guys, so we could not quit. And that ends my report.
No, you can do it. Good evening. My name is Cheryl Dunlap. I have... I have lived in Lynnwood since 1984. I've seen a lot of changes. When I moved in, we were a little over 4,000. Now we've doubled that. I take care of parks and recs. And little audience participation, how many people played in parks when they were kids? Raise your hand. How many people have battle scars from the parks where you fell on your knees? Our children will not have that now. Because of Mr. Ray Campbell, we now have soft mulch in our parks for the kids to fall on. So, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Okay, our village dog park is coming along really well. We have to have some place for our fur babies to play. We'll have fences, benches, waste containers, garbage cans, and a lot of fun with the dogs. What you must do is have a license registered in the village and veterinary certificates that your dogs are healthy. My next thing is the building the Veterans Memorial Park by Liberty Community Park. I'm really excited about that. Thank you all the veterans in the area. Where our groundbreaking will be November 11th. Special thanks to our contributors, the Center for Islamic Teaching and Community Development, and Lynnwood Mobile. I'm working with the Boy Scouts, so the Eagle Scouts, the highest award in Boy Scouts, can possibly help us with the construction in that from the village. I would like to get more park-focused activities, possible ballot referendum for a park district, more regular park maintenance. Thank you for using our beautiful parks. Please continue to keep our parks safe and clean. Thank you.
Who's next? Rolanda.
Good evening, everyone. Obviously, I'm not Rolanda Clark. She couldn't be with us this evening. She had to go to the hospital, so keep her in your prayers. Rolanda, you can, hey, give me that day. Rolanda is over our Health and Wellness Committee, and she has been doing a lot since she's been in place. Obviously, she's a, well, not obviously, but she is a nurse, and so she has a lot of information about the COVID challenges that we've been having, not only as a village, but also as a county and as a state. She's doing monthly awareness updates and mentions, COVID updates, health fun events. Lynnwoodians have been applauded at some of the events that she has been a part of. New ideas for healthy fun is also some of the things that she's been, that she's been doing. This was a really special night. We had a glow night where everyone met at, I think it was at Lakeview Park, at 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM, and we decorated our bikes and with glow-in-the-dark lights and that sort of thing, and we rode through the community. She also had a number of those, are those called Spider's Day? What are those? Slingshots, right. Slingshots, a number of those slingshot motor vehicles. Yeah, it was, right. She had probably about 21 to 25 of those, and we rode through the village. We had a good ride through the village. When she is, returns and when she comes back, she will provide more updates about the healthy things that the village will be a part of moving forward. Thank you very much.
Okay, my presentation will be nice and short, because they stole all my thunder. Everything that I have to say, they stole it all. But I'm Kirk Marshall. I've got to work this thing. Kirk Marshall, over Public Safety. We can skip over a lot of this stuff. I came to Lynnwood in 2004 as the general manager, or manager, and then general manager of Kickerd School Bus, right around the corner here, stayed in that job until 2008. Currently the owner of Special Transport Company. I moved to Lynnwood officially in 2006, because I thought it was a beautiful place, so I built the home, and since built another home. So I'm here at the Lynnwood for a long time. I joined the Planning and Zoning Commission back in 2009, and then in July of 2020, I was appointed a trustee, and reappointed by Mayor Jada Curry as a trustee again back in May of 2021. The Fire and Police Department prior to May of 2021, I just wanted to know a few things when I stepped in the office, who makes the decisions and what do they do, and how does the department run on a daily basis, and how I can support them. And again, they stole all my thunder, so it's not a lot to say. As you see, you met Dan Dempsey, Chief Dan Dempsey, you met AC Robin Boder, we like to call her AC, and also you met Keenan Newton as well, with all their credentials. Some of the fresh ideas that the mayor had was appointing a community policing liaison, which you met Officer Larry over there, adding more officers, they did that already, improving communications with surrounding municipalities, strengthening the relationship between the Fire Department and the elected officials. Let me tell you guys something. These individuals you see up here sitting, in six months, I've never became more familiar with people in my entire life. This is the most cohesive group of individuals I've ever had an opportunity to work with. You guys need to understand, this doesn't happen. This does not happen in other municipalities. We are very special here, and I would lay down for either one of these people up here. If they need me to do something, I'm there. And they know I'm there, I check on them daily, I check on them often, I pop in on the mayor and say, "Are you okay?" Because I got to keep her calm. But again, boosting, how to boost morale, support the departments and their efforts, and always be available with elected officials, and that's what we're doing. So again, they stole all my thunder. The last but not least, the future of the Police Department, some things I know we'd like to see, get some financial assistance in here by the economic development, so we can further assist them with some of the things they want to do. And then to see a new state-of-the-art structure for the Police Department and the Fire Department, so we can be up to date with what's going on and have the proper equipment to do what we need to do and just get better at what we do. And again, support. Now, that challenge not only goes up here to everyone under the sound of my voice and further, we got to support one another to be successful. If we don't support, forget about it, okay? Let's support each other. I'm out there, I'm never going to go without speaking to you. Support me, let's support each other, and let's talk about it, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening, everyone. My name is David Lilly. I've been a resident of Lynnwood for 22 years with my wife Denise, and we raised our two daughters out here. It's a great, great place to live, and I'm so proud to be here. I am part of the Planning and Zoning Board as a chairperson. I have co-chairs trustee Clark and trustee Marshall. What is the Planning and Zoning Board? Well, it consists of seven community residents. They serve as our board members. Some are here tonight. They're essential to the fair and effective administration of zoning ordinances. This sounds boring, but it's necessary. We interpret ordinances and work to ensure that all applicants seeking to open businesses in the community are productive and sustainable. The village attorney and Buildings Department head are an integral part of the process. Legal, logistical, and liability issues are thoroughly discussed at these meetings. Zoning Board process, and this is a very simple oversight of it. Each member receives individual packets containing business applications from the Building Department. A date is then set for the Collective Zoning Board to review the packages. The Board then conducts an initial in-house review of all packages to ensure uniformity, after which a formal meeting is held. The applicant, Buildings Department head, and village attorney are present at this time. A formal vote is taken, and the results of the zoning board's decision is conveyed to the village trustee board for a vote. And that's one of the primary roles of trustees, is to ensure that we're voting on things coming to our community that are sustainable, that are good for the community, and that will benefit us over the long run. Business approvals to date, this is great. We've got, what, eight, nine businesses that have come in already since we've been in office? The Center for Islamic Teaching, L Restaurant, Skyline Learning Academy, LM Sports LLC, Droid Self-Storage, GLS Trucking, Halo Beauty Supply, Dollar General, and more to come. We have more applications coming in, more businesses coming in. This is a great thing to look at. And this is not highlighting the existing businesses that we have here right now. Business approvals to date, I did that, I'm sorry. Okay, so what, how do we do? We measure the success of the village with the number of new businesses we attract. So basically, when you see this happen, you have to say, "These are successful moments." It encourages each of us to invite businesses out, look at our community, plant your roots here, and encourage every resident to support them. That is one of the greatest things that we can do. So in summary, zoning, and I wanted to put this in here, because most people ask, "Well, what is zoning?" Zoning is one of the most common methods of land use control used by local governments. Zoning refers to the use of the public regulatory power to specify how land may be used and developed. The intent of zoning is to balance individual property rights with the rights of the general public, to produce a healthy, safe, and orderly living environment. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, and thank you for your time. This will be quick. I'm also the Public Works Committee Chairperson, and our co-chairs as well, our trustee Clark and trustee Marshall. What we do, we work with the Public Works Department as this liaison to the village board. We respond to village resident concerns in relation to public works issues, snow plowing, speed bumps, restoration projects, things of that nature. Function of this board is to observe and support public works initiatives, ensure that village maintenance issues are addressed in a timely fashion, verify that the superintendent has all necessary manpower and equipment, recruit community residents to participate on the village's first public works committee, which I'm soliciting members for tonight, and develop community-based initiatives that involve public works. What success looks like. New construction meter placement and water turn-ons, these are things that Public Works does, and Ray Campbell's group is very much responsible for that. Repaint yellow emergency curb lines, place speed bumps on streets and corners intersecting Lakeview Park, which was talked about earlier, removing deteriorating towers on 201st and Torrance Avenue, you guys seen that? Repair non-functioning streetlights, parks and parkways maintenance, assist utility companies when location of utilities are needed, snow removal, salting as necessary. So overall, under the leadership of Ray Campbell, this, he has responded positively to every challenge, meeting them head-on. Our continuing support of this vital department leads to a more supportive and healthy physical infrastructure, and I had to move on. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Eves. I was appointed by Mayor Curry to trustee on May 25th, 2021. I am a 25-year resident. I have retired from Chicago Transit Authority with 30 years of service. I started as a student ticket agent, and I ended my career as administrator-manager. My background includes accounting, finance, payroll, various computer systems, and grants. I have a bachelor's degree in interdisciplinary studies with a minor in business. I am a proud mother of three young adults. Christopher, he's 32, my oldest child, he is special needs. He works in Lansing at Lark. My middle son, Nathaniel, is 24. He attends Tulane University. He's finishing his master's degree there. My youngest, Jacqueline, is a 30-year undergrad student at the University of Illinois in I am also strongly and deeply rooted in Christian values. I attend Salem Baptist Church of Chicago under the direction of Reverend James T. Meeks. I have served on the pastorial, music, and children's ministries. My first 60 days was very disheartening to me, and I was in shock. I was given the task of assisting Finance Director Kimberly with the invoices that were, that the village had, that the village had inherited. I found that there were invoices that were not paid as far back as 2019, and had not been put in the system, so I had to sort those bills. I contacted vendors to find out what was ordered and by whom, and then I inputted those bills into the computer system so that we would get a running total and know currently what we owed and who we had to pay. The top issues that I found when we, when we took office was the revenue. There was no revenue. We had to figure out a way to pay the old debt, as well as make payroll for the people who service the village, and to clear the old debt, and also we needed to have some money that would be in our general fund for any type of emergencies. Yes. Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. I am over the chair of the Finance Committee. These individuals are in our committee. We generally research and provide information that will help the village residents financially and educationally. So I have applied for a grant, literacy grant, no, a performing arts grant. I also have started a financial literacy program for grades ninth through 12th. We have currently have 15 students with that, so kudos and thank you to the parents who are allowing us to share that information. Moving forward in 2022, I'm going to apply to these, for these three future grants, as well as we have also started a scholarship fund for college-bound students that we will be awarding scholarships in the year of 2022. So far, we have had two raffles, and we have raised over $600 for that. And with that, I am going to end. Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Randall Blakey. I serve as a village trustee here in the village of Lynnwood. My family and I have lived here since 2001, and I am, I am over a Community Affairs and Economic Development Committee. We made promises, and we kept those promises, and I want you to know about the promises that are in action and then how you can help. The promises that we made were trust, transparency, and transformation. We knew coming in the door that we had to build trust with this community, because so much trust had been violated over the years, and we had to do that through being transparent, as you've heard here this evening. We also promised to enlist community engagement and well-being, a Lynnwood Quality of Life Plan, and economic development for new and existing businesses. We've done this through multiple movie nights in the park. We had Lindbiniya 1 and 2, Lynnwood Fest and the Kid Zone was the responsibility of the Community Affairs Committee. Pace Bus Shelters, we have a Pace Bus Shelter coming in right there at 201st and Torrance. We were tired of seeing our, yes, we were tired of seeing our residents stand on the corner, particularly on the street, literally waiting for the Pace Bus. The Pace Bus Shelters have to be put in where there's infrastructure in place, and so we're working to get more infrastructure in place so that we can get more of those shelters. And then the Lynnwood Quality of Life Plan is some of those promises that have been kept. Some of the examples, the movie night, you see our mayor there at the movie night, Lynnwood Fest, the Lynnwood Lindbiniya 1 and 2, and then the bus shelter that's coming in there at 201st. The promises that are in action, our community engagement initiatives, our Quality of Life Plan, a process for a new ZIP code, and even more economic development. Community engagement, this is where we need your help right now. We have a fall decorating competition that began on November 1st. If you desire to be a part of that, what you have to do is just email me, rblakey@villageoflindwood.net. Let us know that you want to be a part of that. The voting is going to take place through November, November 19th through the 21st, and there will be three prizes for that. Also, some other things that are coming up is a winter Lynnwood Lights Festival, spring, the Lynnwood Spring Fling, and the Lynnwood Hot Blocks. That's what we're going to do during the summer. The Quality of Life Plan is going to be a very important meeting on November 17th. Mark your calendars for November 17th, very important meeting. This is going to be a meeting to explain what a Quality of Life Plan is. I've been a part of a Quality of Life Plan on the north side of Chicago, the Near North Unity Program, where I'm the executive director. That Quality of Life Plan had, has a mission. We have four priority areas. This is the type of planning that any community can do, so that that community has a plan in place that is driven by the residents of the community, so that that community knows what this community is going to look like and expect over the years. You make a plan for the first five years. When you get into the two-year mark, you continue to make another plan for the next five years. This is something that's going to be very imperative for the village of Lynnwood. Again, that meeting is November 17th at 6:00 PM. We're going to find out what the process is, what the benefit is, and what the cost is, and how everyone in this room can be involved in that. is and how everyone in this room can be involved in that process. The Lynnwood Zip Code, there's a process for this. It requires a congressional action and so we're taking, we're making sure that we are dotting all of the i's and crossing all of the t's so that when we go to make this request, that this request will be honored and approved and we'll keep you updated on that. Economic development, Mayor Curry and this village board has been extremely committed to new and existing businesses. As was spoken, we have a Dollar General coming in at Stony and, what is that, Stony and Glenwood Dyer Road. We have Dunkin' Donuts coming in at Torrance and Glenwood Dyer Road. The L Restaurant, if you haven't been, well, you haven't been there yet because it hasn't officially opened, but I would encourage all of you to go there. That's in the Senior Center, what used to be the Senior Center. Droid Storage, as my colleague David Lilly had already mentioned. And then we need formal committee, that formal Economic Development Committee is being established. So if you have experience in business and economic development, please see me so that we can get you a part of that community. This is how you can help. Come to the village board meetings and bring neighbors with you. Plan to attend the Quality of Life Plan meeting on November 17th. Organize your blocks, begin to talk to your neighbors, participate in community-wide events, and establish Lynnwood as a solid Southland voting block. This is imperative. Now, this is what we want and this is what we want to achieve. We're not asking you to come and vote for us. What we're asking you to do is just to vote. When everyone in Illinois knows that 10,000 votes are coming out of the village of Lynnwood, we don't have to go begging, we don't have to go asking, we can request what we want. And so we want to encourage everyone, not only you all, but everyone in your house. We want to become a 10,000-person voting block in the village of Lynnwood. So in summary, we've created trust, transparency, transformation. We've delivered and are delivering on the promises and we appreciate you being here tonight and thank you very much. Now let me introduce someone that you have met before, the mayor of the village of Lynnwood, Jada D. Curry. Give her a great big round of applause.
All right. Trustee Marshall said they stole all his slides. This group literally stole all my slides. So I am going to plow through this. There are some things I really want to talk about that I'm very passionate about. Before I do that, let me acknowledge a few people. I want to thank State Rep Marcus Evans for coming out and supporting the village of Lynnwood. I want to acknowledge Lynnwood's very own sweetheart, Commissioner Donna Miller for coming out pretty in pink. I really want to say thank you to Superintendent of Sunnybrook School District 171, Dr. Erica Milhouse-Pettis. We go way back. And I also want to acknowledge our attorney Graham Quinn, who is here to keep us out of trouble tonight. So I will go fast so that we can get to some of your questions and if the band starts to play, we'll keep answering questions until we can't hear each other anymore. When I became mayor, first question I always get is, "So tell me about you." So for those of you that don't know me, here's a little bit about me. I am a 17-year Lynnwood resident. I am a proud police wife to Deputy Chief of Police in Dalton, Stephen Curry, the best police officer I know. I am a mother of two. I see my big baby girl over there. She is a schoolteacher, Jade, and Stephen is at home. He's a junior at TF South. I have a degree from, an AA from South Suburban, a BA and a MA from Governor State. I hold a PHR, which is a professional human resources certification. I am also a licensed special education teacher. Bet you didn't know that. I have over 20 years of experience in HR. I am deeply committed to service. I served on the school board for Sunnybrook 171 for six years, the last two as board president. I am currently the president of the Early Head Start Advisory Board for YWCA. I was a trustee for two years and I am a mayor for five months and counting. I was looking through some pictures and I found two pictures that pretty much sum up two big days in my life. May 11th, which was the day that I was sworn in. So you see, this picture is me smiling. May 12th was my first day in the office. And I literally cried. And I cried because there was no transition, unfortunately. So I didn't have the luxury of having someone say, "Hey kiddo, here's a starting point for you. Here's a template, here's a blueprint." We did experience the mass exodus and with that mass exodus was all of the knowledge. So the previous mayor was gone, the village administrator who managed the village was gone, the finance manager and HR manager retired. All of that happened prior to me being sworn in. The public works admin resigned, the building admin resigned and gave me, I don't even think she gave me a week's notice, and the building inspector told me he was retiring. So, you know that emoji with the shrugging shoulders? That was me every day. I walked into my office, opened the drawers, the files were empty. I turned on my computer, the files were empty. I say this to you all, not to speak ill of the previous administration because those of you that know me know that's not me, but I want you to be very clear that on day one, it was rough. We had no training manuals, we had nothing to reference. I didn't even have access to our bank account. I didn't know how much money we had in the bank. I couldn't sign off on a check. I literally was lost. There was no things-to-do list, make sure you don't forget about. I had none of that. I do want to say a special thanks to a few people. Lori Stark was the previous finance and HR manager. She did come back for two pay cycles to help us with payroll and I really appreciate her for that. Kayla West was the previous building, oh, public works admin and she did make herself available to answer a couple of questions for us. I want to acknowledge Madam Clerk Karen Wingfield-Bonn because, listen, it was rough and she was the only one who knew even the most basic functions of how to answer the phone and transfer a call and I'm still learning how to do that. Josh Watson, who's on vacation, was a rock for me. He kept me laughing, he kept me going. And the soon-to-be-retiring Sergeant Terry Schuber, stand up. This man has served and protected in Lynnwood and will be retiring on November 30th, but let me tell you, from the time I was elected, he was ringing my doorbell, making sure I was good and when I got in that office, he helped me, he helped chief, he helped assistant chief, and we would not have made it if it were not for you. So I want to publicly give you your flowers. So we had to keep it moving. I had to figure out staffing, I had to listen and learn, and I had to activate. Luckily for me, I have an HR background, so staffing wasn't so hard. We started out with a few volunteers. I started calling some of you in this room and saying, "Hey, can you come in and answer the phone? Can you come in and help us until we figure this thing out?" And from there, I got our, the second-best police officer that I know and the third-best police officer that I know and our fire chief and so on and so on. And this group has really rallied around me and come together to make sure that we keep this plane in the air. Some of the top issues that we quickly discovered are centered around finances. Let me tell you all, that first payroll cycle, we literally did not have enough money in our general fund account to meet payroll. I went home that night and cried again because I had no idea how we were going to meet payroll. Thank God for Kimberly Swidorek, who came in, I met with her, I said, "Hey, listen, I need you to go on this journey with me." She committed. I made her do a secret shake. She stuck with me. And I want to say that, something that I didn't say when she was presenting, I don't think you all really understand the work that she has been doing when we can say that we've held a tall for 10 years and in five months, we paid it off. We've been doing a lot with economic development. I've been forging relationships with our existing businesses and luring, I say, new businesses to Lynnwood. I go around the office singing this song, "Every day I'm hustling" because every day I am hustling for Lynnwood. I won't sing it. Maybe I'll sing it later. You heard public safety talk about having to shift the leadership and the morale. This was major. There's nothing more disheartening than to see a group of police officers who are discouraged and have no desire to truly protect and serve. So to bring in this leadership and get them to where they need to be is huge for us in less than six months. We started with these community events. I have absolutely enjoyed spending time with you. We have been focused on our infrastructure and more importantly, we are committed to creating sustainable systems so that when the next administration comes in, because I know there's a next administration, we will do a handoff to them that is proper and they will not have this same story. Some of our significant milestones, really quick, we're staffed. Amen to that. We are fully staffed. We are trained. We actually know what we're doing, or at least we feel like we know what we're doing. All of our departments are being right-sized. Public safety is expanding to make sure they meet the needs of the village. We had an unfortunate incident here in town which resulted in me requesting a midnight bar closure. I know some of our bar owners were not happy about it, but it was for the good of the village. It is something that we will reexamine at a later time, but for me, it's more important to make sure that you are safe and our officers are safe. We have stabilized these finances. We are meeting payroll, we are paying off bills like crazy. It is unbelievable. We literally have money in the bank and I can access the account now, so I know that's true. Economic development is going through the roof. You heard about all of the businesses. Couple that they did not mention is HGP Event Space. They just held their ribbon cutting last week. It's a beautiful facility if you're looking for a place to hold any events. Halo Beauty, K-Lux Spa, Sweet Potato Patch, which I'm going to share a little bit more about shortly, is a partner. They are our dream partner and you will see why. And we are in talks for a proposed outdoor concert venue similar to Ravinia. So we are making things happen in Lynnwood. We have new communication tools. The, I don't know if you've been on our website recently, but we've improved the website and we actually are completely revamping the website. So a new website will roll out next month that is more user-friendly, has downloadable forms, and will be a better communication platform. We are signing an agreement with Nixle, which will allow us to email and text message you updates. We are now recording all of our meetings. Thank you to Edward Steve. We have a YouTube page. The link to the YouTube page will go on our website next week. So the last two board meetings have been recorded. This meeting is being recorded and all future meetings will be recorded. So even if you can't make it out, you can watch it on YouTube, but what you cannot do is say you didn't know. We have very active Facebook pages, official Village of Lynnwood Facebook pages. You no longer have to ask for permission to come and speak at a meeting. It's a violation of the Open Meetings Act anyway. Just show up. If you have something to say, come. We have more robust board meetings. All of our department heads are present and available and providing great updates. We have an open-door policy and everyone, and I just had a resident come to me and say, "This is the second time I've been to village hall and I had a chance to talk to you. Is it that easy?" Yes, it is. It really is that easy. Another big milestone for the village of Lynnwood is the new census numbers came out. We now have a population of 9,116. We are one of two communities in the southeast region who experienced growth. Everyone else saw a decline in population. And we are working on some major infrastructure projects. I'm going to plow through these really fast. These are courtesy of our village engineer. Everyone knows about Joe Oro. Some of you call it the road to nowhere. It really isn't the road to nowhere. It's a project. Phase 1 was completed in 2012. Phase 2 is expected to begin construction in 2023 with the final phase beginning in 2026. So it is happening. It is a slow-moving situation, but it is happening. We received some investing Cook Funds, which allowed us, which is allowing us to do some work over by 198th and Stony. We're going to resurface Arena Drive and create a multi-use path extension along Stony Island to Glenwood Dyer Road. We received some CDBG funds, which allowed us to go out to bid for Creston Avenue resurfacing. So that resurfacing will take place from 200 Street to Lakeshore Drive. We have accepted a bid and we're just waiting for the weather to cooperate. And we have a project that was funded from SSMMA, which is South Suburban Mayor's and Managers Association and administered by IDOT. This is a project on 201st and Burnham to improve the intersection as well as resurfacing on 201st from Torrance Avenue to Burnham. What does the future hold? A lot. So we are going to increase our focus on youth, adult, and senior programs. We are continuing to seek out businesses that will allow Lynnwood to be self-sustaining. We will continue to improve our financial position. I am not going to be happy until we are out of debt. We will continue to host more community events. We are exploring bike paths. We will continue to increase our public safety presence and improve those relationships. COVID has taught us one thing, we need to focus on health and wellness. So that is why we now have a Health and Wellness Committee and we will continue to focus on that. There, I know I've received calls from some of you regarding road repairs. I have a list of every road in Lynnwood and it's ranked from good to bad. So for next year, we are taking that list and we're going to start doing some repairs. So be on the lookout. Public Works will be out there as well as some contractors. We are enforcing these ordinances. So what I need you to do is get on the website and read the ordinances because some of you are receiving violations saying you didn't know. It's on the website. Take the time as a resident. It is our responsibility to know what is required of us as homeowners. And we'll offer more communication like tonight. We're going to make ourselves available, so if you have a question and you need an answer, we're here. I wanted to show you guys Sweet Potato Patch, which is a project that is breaking ground next year. Phase 1 should be finished in Q1. Sweet Potato Patch delivers healthy meals to a variety of clients. They've outgrown their current facility in Chicago and so they're building a facility here in Lynnwood. When I met with them, I said, "You can bring your business here, but you have to do something for the community." So in addition to building their distribution center for their meals and their corporate office, there's going to be a third building and that third building is your supermarket that you've been wanting. So you'll see the three buildings here. There's a courtyard on the front end. You will be able to sit out and have coffee and tea or one of their meals if you just want to have a nice evening out with family and friends. This is going to be right on the corner of Glenwood Lansing Road and Torrance. And this is some visuals that they recently delivered to my office so that we can have an idea of what the buildings will look like. I'm very excited. They were trying to get here tonight, they could not make it, but this is what true partnership looks like. You can bring your business to Lynnwood, but you have to be a good partner to this So my ask of you is similar to what you've heard from some of the others. Join a committee, volunteer your time and talent, attend board meetings, support our community events, get to know your neighbors. A little less court of social media. One thing the good commissioner told me, great piece of advice she gave me very early on, don't play on social media. I don't play on social media. And I want you all to be very clear. If you have a question and you need an answer and you're looking for facts, you're not getting it from us on social media. Call the office or email us so that you can Call the office or email us so that you can get facts if that's what you're truly interested in getting. We have no problems utilizing our social media pages to push out information because we understand that many of you use it. What we're not going to do is debate or feed into negative energy. And that is not to say that's all that's happening on social media, but believe me when I tell you, I get a million screenshots every week. Did you see this comment? Did you see that? No, I'm not on there. So please, if you want to know something, give us a call or shoot us an email. Get the facts, and then share that with your neighbors. My commitment to you? I will always put Linwood first. I will maintain steady and effective leadership. I will not be afraid to ask and answer tough questions. I will make hard decisions and be straight with our residents. I will partner with all stakeholders. And I will work hard to gain and maintain your trust and respect. My ask of us collectively is really centered around my favorite quote. If you've received an email from me or you know me, you know this is my favorite quote from Helen Keller. And it says, "I am only one, but still I am one. I cannot do everything, but still I can do something. And because I cannot do everything, I will not refuse to do that I can do." Something I can't, that I can do. I'm sorry. So based on that quote, my challenge to you is let's find the one thing that we each can do to make Linwood a beacon of light in the Southland. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out. I am so pleased to see your faces. I am so happy to see engaged residents. We're going to answer some questions for as long as possible, and then we're going to wrap things up. So I'm going to turn it back over to Kiss Allen.
Y'all give it up for the mayor and her team, please. Really quickly, Peter Drucker says that culture eats strategy for breakfast. And what I see here tonight, I've just made myself an official Linwoodian, if you all don't mind. What I see tonight is culture building. I see a shift. I see information. I see transparency. And that's where it starts. But when you have a really strong culture, a culture of ethic of caring, a strong culture, then the conversations become easier. And so I want you all to remember that. There are a few questions that we want to get to. And if you can, as a panel, just kind of pass the microphone around. Are there some active mics? Okay. All right, here's one. The first question, the first question is, how can we get ahead of some of the crime we're seeing in our community? Possibly install some lights, more police presence, et cetera. Tip hotlines. Does anyone want to tackle that? Yes, sir?
Ted. Sorry. Well, we are doing that. One thing that we presented earlier was the flock cameras. So those cameras are a huge asset to our police department. Anybody that comes in and out of Linwood, it records their plate. And when a car comes in, I mean, if there is a dent on the right side of the door, you can just punch in dent on right side of the car. It can track that car, not just by plate, make, model, color. Again, dent on the side of the door. That will help us. Anytime somebody comes in. So if there's a shooting or something that comes through or there's shootings in Linwood that we had last week, we can now identify, we'll be able to identify once they're completely installed, that car leaving or coming into Linwood. So I mean, that is probably the biggest thing that we can do. And the other thing, obviously, we've hired five new police officers. Hopefully, we have two more on the way. We're doing backgrounds on there, so there's a lot more police presence out there. And of course, we always ask for the community's help. If you see something, say something. We want you to call. You can call the police station, ask questions, give us information, ask for the detectives. Anybody up here on the panel, all you have to do is give us a call and tell us anything that we need to know. I mean, we are here for you.
Thank you very much. Out of curiosity, how many of you live in Linwood? Just by show of hands. Okay. All right. That was one of the questions. Okay. From a panel perspective, how many of you live in Linwood? Excellent. Okay. I got you. What is being done in the park on 200th and First? Are they building something? What's going on?
The dog park is going up on 200th and Lake Park.
Will public work crews, public work crews come out to clean debris off the manholes before winter? Water is settling on the streets.
Yes. Yes, we will be out, but we need to get a, if you call the office, call my office, Village Hall, and give us a descriptive location, we can come out and clean them.
Okay. Do we have a balanced budget? What's the village's financial forecast over the next two or three years?
Yes, we do have a balanced budget. We passed it about a couple of months ago. Forecast, like the mayor said, we would like to be debt-free, play catch-up with all our vendors, and just be financially responsible.
Thank you. How much will the recycling be? Costs be?
The recycling fee that you'll see on your bill is $5.95 for everybody who participates in the village garbage service.
Okay. When are the neighborhood block club meetings?
We've been scheduling them every two weeks. You'll get notified. Everybody gets a letter. But we've been doing them every two weeks, and we'll have one actually tomorrow.
Okay, excellent. The role of the homeowners association is to ensure and uphold the village ordinance. What can we do to support the goals of the overall village goal? We look forward to our partnership. What can we do to support the goal? This is the Wellington Court Homeowners Association.
Got it? Okay, here we go. Wellington Court is already off to a great start. This new board has reached out and is attempting to partner with the village. The first thing you can do is make sure that you're knowledgeable about the ordinances so that as you are speaking to the residents over in Wellington Courts, everyone is in agreement that they want to support and abide by the ordinances. And the other thing is to schedule regular meetings with my office so that we can make sure that we're on one accord.
All right, excellent. What's the balance of the existing delinquent water account?
Prior to the last shut-off service that we performed, it was $173,000 in delinquent accounts.
Okay. Do we have any underground lead water pipelines supplying any of our water lines? Are we adequately stocked for the winter? Salt, supplies, et cetera?
Yes, the, we have, we have salt. We have located the contract. At the time the previous administration left, there was no paperwork. But we have located the salt. We have salt in our salt dome. And we are preparing, we are prepared for the winter. We have our vehicles being serviced and providing the necessary service need to maintain the roads and streets.
Excellent.
And as it pertains to? Go ahead.
It pertained to the lead water lines currently, from the last report from my engineer, that we have zero lead water lines in our, in our village.
Are there special tax discounts for business owners?
Yes, and you can call my office so that we can discuss them.
This is pertaining to health and wellness. What is our community status and what hospital are we connected to for community health needs assessment-related activities? Affordable healthcare, et cetera? So I guess the gist of it is, what is our community status and what hospital are we connected to for community health and assessment needs?
So as stated earlier, Rolanda Clark, who is over health and wellness, she's not with us this evening, but we can get that question to her and we can post that answer on the, on the website.
Thank you, sir. Public Works Department. Can we get sidewalks on both Torrance and Burnham for pedestrians? Area south of Glen-Lansing Road.
That's something we will have to discuss with the engineering to make sure that it's feasible. But we will look into it and get an answer back.
Okay. Water Works Department. Will there be new rules to the shut-off processes? I think we talked a little bit about this earlier. Will there be new rules to the shut-off processes? Example, no warning times.
Well, we had a couple people complain that they didn't get any notice as far as the grace period that we had. The grace period from March to the prior, the first shut-off was actually not anything that was, it was more so for us in the office getting used to the procedures. On your bills for years, it's had the procedure for the shut-offs. You cannot carry a balance after the 30th day of the month, 15 days after the due date of the bill. Now that we've kind of got an understanding and a handle on the water billing process, we are going forward with the shut-offs. So by ordinance, we're following the ordinance on the shut-off with the fees and the procedures. So if you have any questions about that, it is on the back of the water bill.
Thank you so much. As mentioned earlier, if your question does not get asked and answered, they will stick around, the committee and the department heads. And so make sure that if you don't hear your question, feel free to approach that person and ask your question. We have two more left. We received flyers for the Lake Lounge. You refer to it as the L Restaurant. Which one is it?
It's the same thing. We all call it something different. But I believe the official name they're going with is L Lake Lounge. So you'll hear it say L. You'll hear it say Lake Lounge. You'll hear it say L Lake Lounge. You'll hear it say the restaurant in the old senior building. Same place.
Excellent. For Public Works. The streets in front of some of our houses and sidewalks keep flooding. What is being done to prevent this going forward?
Well, we are currently working with MWRD and Lincoln-Lansing Drainage. Like I said earlier in our report, is that the stormwater in the streets is drains into Lincoln-Lansing Drainage. And some of the streets have low areas. So that's something that's going to be addressed when we go do and do street repairs. This issue will be addressed at that time with the water and with the drainage.
Okay. Looks like we have some time for a few more, guys. Police Department. Ideas for police to better interact with residents. I know that you guys talked about some of them earlier. Ride through neighborhoods and pass out candy. Can you just? Because I didn't vet any of the questions. I'm just reading them as I get them. I think you alluded earlier to some of the activities that you have within the community. Can you just reiterate some of those that are, that are up and coming?
Sure, no problem. As I said, we're constantly doing neighborhood block meetings. We have a bowling with badges event coming up here, November 20th. That's going to be ongoing. We're going to do that a couple of times. We've done the cops and bobbers. We're going to be doing community events at the schools, basketball games and things of that nature, career days, and interacting with the kids at the parks as well and trying to get all sorts of different little things going on in each and community so that everybody has a chance to participate, you know, in your specific area.
It's a vital component, right? The more that our kids know and our young adults know how to interact and communicate, we lessen that anxiety around them being out and about without us. And so just make sure that we continue to, that's a huge component.
And if I may, just one more thing, and it's something that the chief really spearheaded, and we had support from Marshall and obviously the mayor, is that we're doing that driver's ed program to help new drivers understand what it's like to be pulled over and help them along with that. So we're going to the schools. We've already done that, and it's been a really positive response. We've gotten a lot of calls from parents that they really, really appreciate that we've done that. So I want to thank trustee Marshall, the chief, and the mayor for that as well. It's been a really great thing.
Excellent. Okay, this will be the last one. When will the Village of Linwood get their own zip code?
Listen, you heard trustee Marshall reference the fact that we are actively pursuing it. It is a process. It does not happen overnight. Our commitment to you is that we are initiating the process, and we are going to see it through. How long it takes is really out of our control, but we want our own zip code just as bad as you do.
Excellent, excellent. And so with that said, guys, if you can, please give this mayor and this committee and these trustees another round of applause. There we go. Excellent. Change is emotional, guys. Change is emotional. And I will tell you, the more that you all do this and get connected and have courageous conversations, as you can see, that economic development is coming into the area, and you will continue to see growth. I will close out in parting, right? There are going to be some goodies over here. Make sure that if you have questions, make sure that you stop by and get those questions answered. Always imparting. Remember, my name is Kiss Allen. I've had a wonderful time. Fly low, avoid the radar, and no matter what happens, when they come for the car, save the radio. Thank you all very much, and have a wonderful evening.